Hail religion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have roll call please?
Anthony Lipsansky.
I will have a bagel with everything.
Kenito.
Present.
Sandra Sayah.
Present.
Bonnie Almond.
Here.
Trevor Stone will be absent. Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Alderman.
Here.
Riley Tillitson is absent. Julia Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Anthony Pristack.
Present.
Do the approval of the minutes of the public workshop meeting held on January 5th, the regular public meeting held on January 19th, 2023, reorganization meeting held on February 2nd, 2023, and regular public meeting held on February 16th. Is there...
Let it be written.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Almond, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Hearing a person's present, if you have a comment, come to the microphone.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, my name is Christopher Crush, I live at 125 West 27th Street here in the borough. I'm a volunteer firefighter for the last five years, these ladies and gentlemen here. I have put an application in for the planning commission, I would like to be nominated for that position. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you Chris.
Good evening everybody, my name is Caden Ross Nice, I am a senior here in the borough. I live at 125 West 27th Street, I'm also a... So, excuse me, I'm also a Boy Scout in Troop 4318 out of Adams Town, Pennsylvania. I'm here tonight to seek approval for my Eagle Scout project that will be located here in the borough. Does anybody have any questions?
What do you have, a little example of what you're talking about?
Point out what you want to do.
Is this on the agenda?
This is on the agenda, so it may be more appropriate for them. We'll talk about the thing.
Thank you.
You can bring it back up then.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Moving on, the people's been gone. Next we will do the president's report, and I have nothing at this time. Mayor's report.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our Chamber of Commerce who had a very successful restaurant week this past week. I know the restaurants in Northampton and surrounding areas really had a good turnout, of patrons testing out the restaurants, the new menus and things like that, so it was very successful. And again, congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce, I know Councilman Glassick is on that board also with me, so we look forward to doing that more this year with other chamber events to bring up the quality of life here in Northampton, so congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce. Secondly, concerning this past week's unfortunate events at the high school, and before I pass this over to Chief Kadingo, I want to express my utter disappointment in the superintendent and their police chief due to their complete lack of communications, disregard for proper protocol, and ultimately, the lack of respect for our chief and our esteemed police force. Especially, in light of a meeting where the chief and I met with the superintendent, his police chief, and other school-related entities to open up our communications and the openness that we need here to serve the school district, our students and our community in regard to police events at the school. We were promised better communications and openness, and based upon the events in this last week, I feel the school district, the superintendent and their police chief failed us, failed us and failed us. So, in that regard, I'm very disappointed in them, and I'll let the chief fill in the blanks. Officer, Chief Kadingo rather, please.
Thank you Mayor, and members of council also. As you may or may not be aware of, recently in social media, there was a threat that came in Friday at the high school. Our department was not aware of that until Sunday afternoon. I became aware, I became aware of it through a message from the superintendent that there was an email sent to me, which I reviewed, and then called the superintendent. At that time, we discussed the availability, and manpower advised him it was short notice. And I tried to get guys, it wasn't possible to get guys to work at the school. He informed me that he had Pennsylvania State Police, Lehigh Township, and Moore Township. Conversation was brief. When I came in Monday, I realized, after conversing with officers that have children in the school, that all the information about what happened at the school was sent out to the parents, and also became aware that the state was also aware of it Friday. We were not. The reason I bring this to your attention, as it is the appropriate forum, is you, we all, council, me, we're responsible to our residents. If there are issues in the future, should this not get rectified, if there are questions about our conduct, I would like you to be aware that we may, or may not, be aware of any or all the facts of anything that's going on up there. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that, there's a lot posted on social media, there's multiple articles about it in the press, but we were not aware of it. Does anybody, yes sir?
Question. Has there been any more discussion in following up with the superintendent and the security?
I have not heard from him at all. In fact, I read about the arrest of the two girls in the media.
I saw it on the news tonight, yeah, yeah, that's good notification. Is...
And Monday, by the way, because I didn't get manpower, I did have patrol units going through the parking lots all day long, sent both detectives up there, I did what I could, and offered to do what I could through our conversation. I am, my concern is the safety of the students, we will be usually, barring some catastrophic circumstance, we're going to be the first people there, our department.
Absolutely.
Yes sir.
Was there, did you see Lehigh Township and State Police there? Oh, so they did?
Yes, they were there.
Because you said that, but I didn't know if they were there, okay.
And has this happened in the past?
Yes.
So, we sit two blocks from the school, and our police department is not notified, is that correct?
For certain things, yes. We have, what I'm at a loss about is, we've gotten called up there for stuff as minor as it, what they called a disruptive student who was refusing to take off his sunglasses.
That's critical.
We've gotten called for that, but something like this, we haven't. So, that's where I'm at a loss, I don't know.
Brian, are you having, excuse me, Chief Kadingo, are you having any issues with the cars that are parked over here?
No, we monitor a lot pretty well, I mean, other than, you know, typical...
Would you be able to monitor that lot if there would be no cars there? Because I would like to remove the permission for the high school kids to park there. Park in the school, get off the borough property if that's the way you want to play.
Well, we need to have some communication with the school district, I hope that that's implemented, Mayor.
Yes, we did, as I was first elected, meet at the high school. We were very optimistic about how that outcome would be. We were promised, again, that openness and better communications, and it's been anything but. Okay, and that is my disappointment, because you have guys back there who would charge up the hill
That's right.
to help that high school, to help our students. And for them to be disrespected like this, it's unacceptable to me, and it should be unacceptable to everyone here on this panel
It is.
and to our citizens, so. Thank you Chief, and again, I expect better from our school district and our superintendent and their police chief.
Any other questions from any board members?
And just lastly then, I'd like to, since the weather is warming up, I encourage everyone to get out on their bikes, and I know our bike patrol is ready to go, the guys have been stretching, warming up, getting the bikes in shape, so feel free to join them down the canal path or wherever you see them around town, so spring is getting here. So, everyone, look forward to getting out and enjoying our beautiful park system and our canal walk, so. That's all I have, thank you very much. Madam President, I have a question.
Okay.
I would think that we need to question the, how should we say? School district to verify, document, and show proof why this police department was not notified, but they called State Police, which is out on the other side of Bethlehem, they called Moore Township, which is at least seven miles away from here, and who knows what else? I think it's a slap in the face from the administration to everybody in that school district to spit on our police officers, who would go up there, and unfortunately, and I pray it never happens, would probably be willing to lay down their life to protect the kids. But why are we protecting people who have no respect for us? You feel like a hanky. I would like a letter written to the school board, asking them to validate, explain, and offer proof as to why this department was not notified of a situation that occurred 250 to 300 yards away from them, not miles. I want to know why they did not notify the police department. And if the situation calls for, maybe we need to have a head on the block.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lipsansky, I would be glad to pen that letter.
Thank you sir, and don't be nice.
Let's, let's, let's move on, all the letter, Tom.
Let's move on. Move on, next we'll go to our solicitor's report.
No, nothing major to report, just the fire meeting that was held earlier this week was fantastic, and just props to our firefighters, I know we have a bunch of them in here, so thank you for what you do. It's also not frequent, and we have a lot of our police officers in here as well. You guys have an amazing presence, thank you for everything that you do in Northampton Borough. You guys do a genuinely fantastic job. Other than that, I have nothing. And as normal to council, does anyone on council have any questions for me at this time? Very good, nothing else, thank you.
Okay, move on to reports from committees, administration and finance.
Okay, thank you. We have received a letter from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation notifying us that the liquid fuels tax payment in the amount of 269,000... 296,520.34 was deposited in our account as of March 10th, 2023. We also received recycling performance grant in the amount of $20,941.31, and the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission will hold their general assembly virtual meeting on Wednesday, March 29th at 7:00. They recommend that officials as well as legislators attend this meeting. Registration is available by using the information on the email that was included in our packet. End of report.
Thank you.
So, just seeing the collection of individuals that we have in this room, and knowing that some of you may be invested in one specific item that may be on our agenda, I have suggested to the chairperson of our meeting that maybe we put a pin in reports from committees and maybe address that agenda item, so long as everyone on council is acceptable to that, so that way we can get our officers back protecting Northampton Borough.
Just sort of like looking out.
We have to be protected too Brian.
I know, but...
Number nine. Consider hiring a full-time police officer.
The Civil Service Commission has prepared an eligibility list of qualified candidates for the entry-level patrol position in the borough police department. Police Chief Brian Kadingo recommends hiring Robert Lindsay, effective April 3rd, 2023.
I respectfully make a motion as to affirm that nomination and call for a vote to hire.
I second.
Second by Mrs. Sayah?
Yes, I reviewed the scores that I have received in the mail.
Well, thank you, thank you for your second. Questions?
Yeah, how many full-time officers will this give us?
We will be back at 16.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're real never reading. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck Rob.
We'll go back to the reports from council members. Building land in regulation, recreation. Ms. Alderman?
Yes.
Thank you gentlemen.
The committee met on Friday, March 10th, to discuss several aspects regarding the swimming pool. We did discover through much conversation that Public Works Department has made a good start and has very good ideas centered on maintaining discipline at the pool, as well as work surrounding areas of the pool. We did come up with a suggestion to either look into a volunteer or some paid adults to monitor behavior on an ongoing basis. We received notification from one of our borough residents that he's willing to commit a $1,000 donation toward the construction of a monarch butterfly weigh station along the DNL Trail. This would serve as part of the local share for the mini grant application. And park permits are moving slowly, so people can be aware they are out there to come into our offices and sign up for what you need at the pavilions. Thank you. End of report.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
May I ask a question before we move on to the next item?
Yes, I mean, I'm doing two things, two things at once.
Councilwoman Judy, I'm sorry, Alderman. On the number one with the swimming pool, was there any thought or discussion regarding the minimum age requiring an adult?
Yes, we discussed that and did not feel at this point that that was the best way to attack some of the concerns. We really did kick around some ideas, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it. Nothing has been defined specifically yet, but we just thought that we could maybe come up with some other solutions and try to confine it to that at this time.
All right, thank you for that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Code and police, Mr. Lipsansky, would you read that part?
Thank you, Madam President. The police department will be holding a fishing derby sponsored by the Northampton Exchange Club on April 22nd, 2023, from the hours of 9:00 to 3:00 PM. It will be located in the Hockey Creek, behind the municipal complex. Parents can bring their children, register them, stand, watch, help them, it's a fun thing. It's going to be right back here, along the creek. That is the end of my report.
Thank you. Now we move to fire and health, Mrs. Almond?
Thank you. Enclosed in your packet are the minutes from the February 28th Board of Health meeting. They meet on Tuesday, March 28th at 7:00. Also enclosed is the February Health Officers' Report. The Fire Committee met on Monday, March 13th at 7:00, at the fire station. Several items were discussed, including a suitable training area and a youth firefighter summer camp. A copy of the Fire Department's annual report is available. End of report.
Well, thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business. You know what, you're putting on two pages. Public Works of Sore.
Thank you. The crew of Public Works employees recently repaired the sewer line on West 26th Street. There were considerable tree roots in the lines, and a watchful eye will be kept on the budding properties. I believe there's cameras that we are in the midst of getting and upgrading to further protect that. The exterior doors on the south wall of the Atlas Museum have been replaced. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Under unfinished business? Wow, that's pretty cool. Under new business? Consider preliminary and final approval for 1204 Main.
Planning Commission has granted preliminary and final approval for the development located in 1204 Main Street for 15 efficiency apartments contingent upon a variance from the zoning hearing board, which was granted.
Is there a motion to act on this?
Before we get to that, we've been involved with this project and reviewing it, it would be our office's recommendation that any approval received as a part of it, a condition that the developer be required to provide documentation of parking that will be available, and that that parking will for a fact be available, and that the parking will be available for the duration of the proposed use of the property. From a practicality standpoint, when you're talking about in particular, the subject property, parking is going to be, I don't want to say an issue, because I don't want to assume anything negative, let's just say it's going to be a massive component of what's going into there. So, from the borough perspective and from the solicitor's perspective, we just want to make sure that the property will always be taken care of in terms of the parking location. So, that would be a recommended condition. And that that parking, that documentation be provided, not only to our office, but to the borough as well. So, that way we know what's going on. Microphone if you wouldn't mind, because this is being livestreamed. Thank you.
That condition is impossible. That's condemning the property.
Why do you say that?
Because it's owned by a railroad, they're not going to give a 100-year lease. And you're saying as long as the building is being used, you have to have the parking. That's totally, in my opinion, ridiculous. You'd have other places that are right there. You have a flooring place, they have like two parking spaces, and they park a trailer there. They have no parking. You go over to the diner and the other place, they have a very small parking lot. They don't comply with anything. We had variances given, there have been all the engineering reports submitted, they've been reviewed by your engineer, by the other people in question, everything was complied with. There's, that parking lot, as probably everybody is familiar, because you're all from the borough, has been there forever with the VFW. When they operated, they had much more, many more people than this apartment complex is going to have.
But they weren't an apartment complex.
Excuse me?
But they weren't an apartment complex.
No, they were worse, much worse, and you never made them have parking. Never made them have parking. So, this is a prior non-conforming structure that had no parking that you're required.
That's being changed into apartments, it's a different use of the term.
So, you're saying you can't have anything there?
No, it's not what we're saying at all.
Yes you are.
No, it's not. Did you hear me say that we can't use the building for anything? Did you hear me say that?
Yes you did.
No, I didn't, and we asked for, it's a recommendation to council, we asked for proof of parking.
We already had gone through everything, proof of parking, we've already submitted that. I think the borough manager has that, they've had it. It's, the railroad has given the lease, it's been leased for 20 years. They're just giving it. They don't give five, 10-year leases, they just don't. So, if you were putting a residence in there, you'd want parking, and they wouldn't be able to show it to you. So, you're saying nothing can ever go in there, because they're never going to be able to show you parking. Yes you are, tell me what you're saying. What can go in there that doesn't require parking?
We're asking for parking proof, for apartments that are being proposed to go into that building.
We gave you the parking that's available. It's always been available, everyone knows here it's available.
So, parking's available, then what's the issue?
We already submitted it, what's your issue? You're saying for the duration, suppose the railroad in 10 years from now, we're supposed to rip the building down after 10 years? That's what you just said.
That's not what we're saying, because at that point, if the building's taken down, then you don't have apartments there anymore, so it doesn't really seem like the proposed use is going to be ongoing.
That's really comical, you know, it really is.
I'm pointing out something factual here.
No you aren't.
I am.
Yours...
Because if a building gets taken down, where are the apartments? Are they in the rubble?
No, then you'll be happy it all goes down. Is that your goal?
No.
Well, sure it is.
You're talking about if, ands, or whats. If parking's not an issue, as you're telling me right now, then what's the issue with the condition? If it's not an issue, did you not just say yourself that it is not a problem?
I did not say that. Do you have like a hearing impediment or what? Never said that. I'm saying to you that we have gone, there's parking there.
I think the only one that's having hearing issues is you, because I did not say that the property will have no use.
Well, if they file an action...
I said that you asked for proof of parking. And if you're saying it's already been submitted to the borough, then congratulations, you've done it.
Well, you already did, and I think the borough manager has said, yes, it's been done. So, he'd say it's been submitted.
Then what's the issue with the condition then?
Length? You're saying in perpetuity?
For the proposed use of the property as apartments.
Once you build apartments, they're going to be apartments.
Okay.
So, no matter what we would put in there, if you had that same condition, and you lost the parking, it would have to come down. No matter what you put in there.
But, we're not talking about an abstract, we're going to put anything in, we're talking about very real apartments that are being proposed.
Tell, but you tell me, what can we put in there that doesn't need parking?
I'm not talking about anything, I'm talking about specifically apartments that are being...
No, tell me, because you're saying nothing can be put in there.
That's not what I'm saying.
I asked you...
As someone that wanted to throw insults around about hearing, it seems to me that the only person having hearing issues is you.
No, it's you. You saying, tell me what can be put in that requires no parking? What, that's an...
We've made our recommendation, you can accept it or not.
We've made our recommendation, thank you sir.
We've made our recommendation, you accept the condition, you accept the condition. If the council does not accept their condition, then council doesn't accept my proposed condition.
So, your condition is if they lose parking, they have to vacate the building, that's going to be your condition.
No, we're saying, we're saying then you have to provide other parking.
There's a municipal parking lot right across the street.
Okay. What was that? So, for those that can hear at home, and I understand that you're just sitting there, the question was, what would be the outcome if you can't provide the parking? Are you talking about now, or are you talking about in this hypothetical 10 years from now or something?
Five years from now, two years from now, 20 years from now, whatever.
I mean, isn't that part of the issues of owning a property and having to come into... I mean, we would expect to hear some answers from you, if that was to become an issue. I'm telling you right now, we'd be more than happy to work with you in any way, shape or form that we possibly could.
What would be working with you if the railroad 20 years from now, 10 years from now, says, "We've decided to plant trees there instead"?
Okay. Then you let the borough know, and we see what we can do about talking with the... At that point, if there's going to be an issue like that, then that would materially change the property that we're talking about right now. That's an if, and, or but though. I'm talking about right now.
But how are you going to ever get financing, a bank to lend you money, saying, "We're going to give you money to put these apartments in, $800,000" or whatever. "But, you might have to vacate in two years if you lose the parking." What bank lends money on those?
And who's saying that you're going to have to vacate? If something like this happens with the tree example, I think that's a fine example. You come to us, and we talk about what we can do about an actual solution there, instead of having to displace 15 units of people living there. Because let's not forget that those people that are going to be moving into that facility, at that point, are borough citizens. And if borough citizens have a possibility of being displaced, you better believe that this borough government is going to do everything it can to make sure that those people do not get displaced. And we're going to work with you every step of the way, if something like that were to happen. I feel very comfortable as a solicitor and representing this body and government, that that would be our promise. We're not going to just let 15 units of individuals be displaced because parking is suddenly becoming an issue five, 10, 15 years from now.
But if you had to invest a million dollars of your money, would you feel as comfortable that it's going to be, if something can be worked out, you can stay, if not, the place is shut down? You got a million dollars riding, you're comfortable with just saying it might shut you down? Who would ever do that project?
And like I've said before, the best I can tell you right now is we've made our recommendation of a condition, if something were to change on the property, absolutely, we're going to work with you. But i- i- and I'm not saying it would be, and again, i- i- we're talking about actual borough residents at that point that are moving in. What, what, what municipality is in the business of displacing their citizens?
And what landlord is going to be in a position of displacing their citizens?
And exactly, I, I, we're agreeing here then.
The lease is, the lease is very cheap, but the problem is even the township itself has leases everywhere and they're not long term. So what puts me in a different category than the township? You guys are in, you guys have the same exact lease that I have. Why is it okay for you to have it but not me?
What do you mean by that?
All the township parking that's from the railroad is month to month. Same lease that you get from the railroad, they're a railroad, they don't care who you are.
No, I, absolutely.
They do, what they want, when they want.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, for me, I tried to buy it off them, I offered them to, I offered to pay them for ten years, they don't care, they just don't care. There's nothing you can do with them.
They take payment for what year?
I, I offered to pay a hun- a hundred years, they just don't want, they don't.
And I under- and I understand that.
They don't apply like that.
And which is why I'm saying, as it stands right now, it's being represented to us that the parking is not an issue. If it were to become an issue, we're going to work with you. It's not like, oh, they planted some trees and, oh, all right, everybody get out of here. It, that's, that's totally unrealistic to how anything like that would work. That's unrealistic. But again, because at that point too, we're not just, and no offense to you, sir, but we're not, at that point, we're not necessarily entirely concerned with the business, we're concerned with the people that are living there. Of course, your business is a part of that and we, we don't want borough businesses going away. Please understand me when I say that. At that point, we're worried about the people that are living there.
And what do you mean by work with?
Hey, it all depend on the circumstances. We're going to see what we can do at that point, if, if some of these issues were to arise, we take it on a fact by fact basis.
But if the condition would be something like, that he would come back and work with the bishop, the borough for a solution, some solution, not just, you have to discontinue the use until something's worked out. I mean, if it's like, okay, the borough can impose some new condition on you for spaces, but you're not going to have to vacate the building, your whole investment. If he has the leased parking two blocks away, okay, that would be fine, but not vacate the building.
What I could tell you right now is that as a borough, we're not in the business of displacing residents at the first sign of resistance. And if you're telling me right now, as it stands right now, I'm not in dealing with hypotheticals. If you tell me right now that parking's not an issue, then the condition shouldn't be an issue.
But read your condition again if I could, I think it was like you couldn't occupy the building and for the entire time you're occupying the building, you have to have this parking lot.
It is our recommendation that the developer be required to provide documentation showing that parking is available and will continue to be available for the proposed use.
And that's it for the proposed use, as long as it's nothing that you have to vacate if we lose the parking. We'll have some other solution, we'll try to do some, but we can't be that the building, a bank looks at conditions on these things too. It can't be that you have to vacate a million dollar building.
And, and that's the other part of it, the applicant would have to guarantee that parking remain available throughout the proposed use of the property.
That's the part that's the difficult one, how are we going to guarantee it? I mean, if, we were told if we got this down last time when we were planning commission and we were zoning, if not, we should have gone for a variance and no parking, it's a prior non-conforming structure and we're, we're yes, less intense use for parking than when it was the VFW. And gotten a variance or gone to court and then we had to provide no parking.
But you keep saying that as if that's material right now, it's being changed uses to apartments.
Right, but it's still a building that has no parking.
Okay.
We, I made my recommendation to council.
Okay, so, thank you, sir, have a seat please, thank you.
So, Mr. Glass.
Can I have a question about it?
Yes, Mr. Glass.
So we had, there, originally this is the same property that had thirty parking spaces requested and we approved twenty-one, is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And what is the requirement for residential Leroy for parking or maybe solicitor?
Well, uh, the zoning ordinance requires two per unit.
So we did make an exception for the fact that they didn't, couldn't provide thirty and we went to twenty-one and approved it?
Uh, the zoning hearing board did that, yes.
Okay. I mean, that's stated on January nineteenth at that, at that council meeting.
They gave a variance for a hardship, yes. But even if it was a one residence, we don't have the two parking spaces.
So what is your, of the dialogue? Repeat what you're recommending to this council.
Well, what's before council right now is, uh, something that, uh, either approval or disapproval, if approval was to go through, again, our recommendation as the solicitor's office would be a condition that the developer be required to provide documentation showing that parking is available and will continue to be available for the proposed use, uh, and that, uh, uh, then, and also requirement that they attempt to get a, uh, I'm sorry here, I'm just re-reviewing everything because there was a lot going on there. I'm going to start from the top just so that we have everything. I'm going to repeat what was said, uh, at the very beginning of this. Uh, developer be required to provide documentation showing that parking is available and will continue to be available for the proposed use. And we would also, uh, recommend a condition that Norfolk Railroad Company sign an agreement to that effect, which will remain in effect while the property is in use for the proposed use, and that the applicant guarantee that the parking remain available throughout the proposed use of the property. Effectively, what we're looking through through those conditions is just assertions that parking is going to be provided for a change in a building usage to apartments.
And our position was the first part of the condition, could the lease go through, the second, the second and third are a real impossibility to be able to, to get financing for a man to purchase the property, if they're now the owner, they purchased it from the team. The first part of the condition before it was, we stopped and started to read the second and third.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on with this, sir, thank you. Is there a motion or what is the opinion of this council? Once again, is there a motion or really what is the opinion of the council?
I make a motion that we, we move forward with the, the twenty-one spaces, but they, you know, I, we can't change what the railroad decides to do with it and tell you that, that's not in our hands, just as you admitted, you know, you can't work with them, but that's just something with a business that you would take on. If it ever changes to a vacancy, you would have to find other parking, that's the way I interpret this, is, am I seeing it or hearing it differently? If it does not become an apartment, are the parking spaces because of the railroad changes, they'd have to find, provide parking somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
The same twenty-one spots or more?
No, twenty-one that we agreed originally.
The twenty-one spots that we agreed to.
Well, yeah, with the zoning hearing board.
Yes.
And that would be an ongoing discussion if something were to happen like that, that would change what was going on with the property, so you have to, of course, adjust.
Make the motion that we follow the twenty-one spaces that were given? And again, that's their decision as a, an investor, if they want to do that, I, I'm like, you know, we're not here to agree with what the railroad tells you or not tells you. I, I understand your wording on the hardship, but as long as there's a apartment complex or rental units, there's twenty-one spaces that would be provided. That's what we're voting on.
So, am I understanding that you are making the motion to approve with the recommended conditions?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that we were there.
Without the, avai- without what the solicitor just said, the available, uh, documentation?
Yeah, we would ask for the documentation, uh, that the, uh, spaces would be provided.
Okay.
And again, i- if, and I understand the motion that you're making here. If Norfolk Railway Company isn't willing to give you an agreement or something like that, then that's what we have to deal with.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have anything to stand with them.
I think that the borough manager, weren't you supplied with all those, like your engineers?
Uh, the, um, this, the zoning officer had showed me, uh, in the minutes of one of the zoning hearings that the railroad did not establish a timeframe, they simply said, we will continue as is. It didn't, it didn't set a limit, it didn't guarantee a limit, and it didn't say, uh, this is going to end in two years.
Correct.
It was an ongoing, the, the same ongoing agreement that they had with the VFW. That's, that's the best I can report.
So we technically have a motion on the floor right now, of approval of the plan with the conditions as recommended.
What is the opinion of council?
We need a second.
You didn't get it?
No, that's my turn, we, uh, uh, Vice President Glassik made the first.
Oh, I missed two, so, okay.
We made the first.
Need a second?
This is with your conditions, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All those in favor? Discussion, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
No, nay. The ayes have it.
Did everyone vote or not?
I didn't hear.
You didn't vote? You voted, right?
I would suggest a roll call.
Wait, I need a roll call, please?
I would suggest a roll.
Okey dokey.
I thought I heard everyone's vote.
Just to be sure about it.
Solicitor, would you read the exact motion that, that you, the way you put, and put it down on?
Absolutely. No, that's not a problem, if you don't mind me one second here. And again, if we're going to be doing a roll call in particular, I appreciate Vice President's, just so everyone knows what's going on here. Uh, condition, uh, that the developer be required to provide documentation showing that parking is available and will continue to be available for the proposed use. And, uh, uh, a recommendation that, a condition be that there be a requirement that, uh, a Norfolk, a signed agreement from Norfolk Southern Railway Company will sign an agreement to that effect, which will remain in effect while the property is used for the proposed use, and that the recommendation is as well as that the parking will remain available throughout the proposed use of the property.
Okay, uh, when I call your name, if you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yea, if you are opposed, you will vote nay. Anthony Lipsansky.
Nay.
Kenneth Hall.
Yay.
Sandra Seiya.
Yay.
Bonnie Alman.
Yay.
Ronald Glassik.
Yay.
Judith Alderman.
Yay.
Julia Kutzler.
Yes.
The motion is passed.
Thank you. All right.
Let's talk about this.
Next, we'll move on to consider appointment to the planning commission.
We have received an application from Christopher Crush of one twenty-five West Twenty-seventh Street to serve on the planning commission.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Judy Alderman, second. Kenny, okay, question?
You trumped me over there, Mr. Lipsansky.
I'm sorry.
Re- reinforcing the vote.
Motion presented by, uh, Mr. Hall, second by Judy Alderman, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So they just didn't tell you what you're going to have to do.
First issue will be parking spot.
Come and visit, we'll, we'll fill you in.
First issue is parking spots, isn't it?
I believe so.
We have received retirement and husband zoning officer Julianne Edelman, effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, she will be missed. What is the opinion of this council?
I respectfully make this motion.
Motion made by Mr. Kenny Hall, second. They're going to second, don't they?
Yes, second.
Second by Mrs. Alman. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consider requests for the van shell rental.
We have received a written request from the city of Bethlehem to use our portable van trailer on Sunday, October twenty-ninth for their Halloween parade. They have also requested a rain date of Sunday, November fifth, twenty twenty-three. They will be required to pay a delivery and removal fee and provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured.
What is the opinion of the council?
Make a motion to allow them to use the van shell.
Motion made by Mr. Glassik, who have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I forgot your questions, you may have a question.
Is there, uh?
No. No, they did not ask to use the portable.
Were they aware of it?
Um, yes.
Have further questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of the fire department.
The fire department has been looking at replacing two of their trucks with a single unit. In order to get into the queue, we would need to make our intentions known now. Even so, the completion of the construction is expected to be three or perhaps four years out. This would allow for sufficient time for the fire tax to generate some of the funds needed.
Make a motion to honor that request.
Second with the explanation from chief. No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Motion paid by Ms. Alman, second by Mr. Glassik.
If you don't mind, please.
So essentially, we're, we're going to take two of our aging trucks combined into one unit. As mentioned, we're talking three to four years till delivery. No money has to be put down until one year prior to delivery, um, but it's such a backlog right now that the longer you wait to get in queue, the longer it's going to take for your truck and the more expensive it's going to be, they're, they're anticipating one and a half percent every month that you, that you don't order a truck. EPA alone apparently changed engine standards for as far as emissions, and that's skyrocketed the cost for the engine manufacturers by ninety-two thousand dollars. So the sooner we can get in, the sooner we can, um, move forward with the project, and we're locked into our, we're locked in then. We're locked into the price, there, there won't be any increases once we sign the contract.
Thank you.
Is this a fluid type of, uh, list? Can anybody else force their way ahead of us?
As far as I know, no. Uh, there's, there's different production queues, it's a matter of what you're building, what production queue it goes into. Apparently, we are what they describe as a bay three construction, and that puts it at, uh, forty-two to forty-six months to build, so that's about three to almost four years.
So in other words, once we make the authorization or affirm the authorization, we are locked in, the company will produce the machine that we're asking for. No one else can slip in and...
As far as I'm aware, once you sign your contract, you're put in the pile and people get put under you, behind you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Any more questions? With the chief. So we had motion, second, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Congratulations. Congratulations, guys.
Okay.
Well deserved.
Do you have permission? Consider request for an Eagle Scout project.
Boy Scout Kate Narasenese seeking permission to prepare memorial area in conjunction with the placement of the new sign at the fire station. He is hoping to provide this as his Eagle Scout project, and as you saw before, he is with us tonight to explain his project. I believe everybody, uh, has a copy of this, and this is what you'll be referring to.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's, floor is yours.
Floor is yours.
As stated before, my name is Kate Narasenese, Troop four thirty, forty-three eighteen, out of Adams Town, Pennsylvania. My project is to lay out a set of pavers and bricks, each inscribed with the names of either firefighters. My project is to lay out a set of pavers and bricks, each inscribed with the names of either firefighters or, if possible, veterans, as I hold them very dear to my heart and I believe everybody in the community does. Uh, working along with the fire chief to figure out placements and dates for this project. I'd be looking to get this done or started by the beginning of April, if not about mid-April, second to third week possibly. The cost estimate roughly for... Cost estimate would be roughly about six thousand before contributions donated by anybody who would like to get a personalized paver for someone in their family or that they're friends with or they know. And working with a budget of about fifteen hundred with the materials to overall go into the project. Uh, with the packets that you have in front of you with the pictures, on the back of the first sheet, there is, uh, rudimentary, basic, um, information on the projects, such as the pricing per unit of brick as well as the company and area size of the project. The company is Polar Engraving out of Naples, Florida. Um, as I was given a sample brick by them, they hold a very high quality of brick and I believe it would, would work well within the area of the fire department, which is where they currently have their flagpole and sign. Uh, if it would be inclined or if the council would like to see, uh, Mr. Mike Marty, my scout master, if you'd be so kind to show the, bring to the public people up there?
Wow, that's great. It's beautiful.
Are you showing that question? Is this the dimension the same as the dimension of the current sign?
I'm sorry?
The dimension that you're proposing is gonna be the same as the existing sign or is it a separate new sign?
Within the area where the project would be going.
So I, I take it you're, are we replacing this one? So we're replacing it with this? The memorial. Cadence, I don't know. I'm guessing I'm directing it to the chief because he's working with you on this. So the existing sign that you have on your picture, are you replacing that with this memorial?
In, in a way, yes.
Okay.
We, we did receive a grant from the county for a new sign. It's gonna move, if you've ever been to the firehouse, we have a cademary where we can park trucks for refilling with the hydrid there. Our sign is gonna move behind there to make more room for his Eagle Scout, for his, his pavers and everything.
I'm all in for, favor of this. And can we, can it have room to grow so when firefighters pass on, as everybody will eventually? Or people wanna add another, there is room for that and adding on to it?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we can plan accordingly. We have some plans of our own.
Love, love the idea.
Maybe even more special, but he's gonna do a great job.
Fantastic. Love the idea. Thank you for your leadership in taking this on as an Eagle Scout.
Kate, when?
All for, all in favor of it? Go ahead, I'm finished.
Kate, and when, when does it need to be completed by?
Uh, in total, I would have to have, I'd like to have the project done before June, most likely, if not mid-June, as I'm supposed to have this in by the time I turn eighteen, which would be the twenty-first of July this year.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
You should get hired by PennDOT or something. That's incredible, cuz we have a, a present, I think it's seventeen years, probably. So good for you, Kate.
Three, three months, and you have your volunteers lined up already?
Uh, I'm working on that, but I have a good amount of people who are willing to come out and volunteer to help in this.
And clarify for me one more time, the cost, the total cost of it?
The total cost, uh, before contributions, it would be about six thousand in total with four thousand five hundred mainly focused towards the pavers and other materials. And then also working with a smaller fifteen hundred budget, fifteen hundred dollar budget for any other costs that would have to come in.
One more question. Do you have, um, people lined up already that are interested in purchasing the bricks to kind of cover these costs? Or have you started thinking about how you're going to be letting people know that that's an available purchase?
Um, I have a few people lined up that have already agreed to purchase bricks off of me. However, I was also going to ask if, if the borough or the fire department, if they would like to help spread the word and get it out to people that you give fifty bucks, you can get the, a person inscribed on a brick and it'll be put into a location in our project that hopefully should stand for a good long while.
So you'll have, you'll have a project website in one week after your approval. So he can't start fundraising until you approve and sign his project request while the fundraising was. And then, um, the, what the company that's doing the bricks will actually make a website for him and then we can refer everybody to the website to, um, buy the bricks. And then once all the bricks are purchased, then they'll ship them to us.
And then can that be linked to our website so that our website?
That's what we're asking. We can send you the link.
Oh, perfect.
You, you, you all would have to, you know, preview that.
Mr. Ross call up the other back.
And then to clarify the cost, the, um, the, uh, materials cost is forty-five hundred dollars. And I've done projects with other Eagle Scouts in town like this, so there's a couple of companies we've worked through in the past, EP Henry, a couple of local cores and stuff like that, so normally we can get materials donated to the project. The other fifteen hundred dollars, there's, um, a lot of other little things that are gonna go into play. And then finally, any money that he goes over on the project will be given back to the borough.
Thank you.
Okay, then? That's wonderful.
It really is.
Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Quick question. Kate, um, I heard you say Adamstown. What's your connection to Northampton?
So I'm, I was born and I live here.
Okay.
So originally, I was out of Cherryville, but our troop disbanded.
Thank you.
However, my stepmom's troop is in Adamstown.
Okay, very nice. Okay. Uh, still thirty-two merit badges for Eagle Scout?
As far as I know.
How many now? That's all? Okay, it used to be thirty-two, but still, you have obviously plenty there, so congratulations.
One of those bricks only cost fifty dollars? Or is it just the inscribing? So the brick plus the inscribing is fifty dollars.
That's it?
It's, it's a base of fifty dollars for a twelve by twelve, uh, brick. Um, if you would like to get a small decal or art added on, as you saw with the brick that was passed around, as the Boy Scouts of America logo, uh, engraved on it, that would cost an extra six. So it's a roughly fifty to sixty dollar charge.
So he gets, for fifty dollars, he gets thirty, it costs him twenty for the brick and that includes inscriptions and, um, shipping. So then what we can do is, it's a standard brick, so we can add additional brick, blank bricks to the project. And then if people later on want to do something, we can.
Absolutely.
That's great. Congratulations.
Just a question. When, uh, construction starts, are you gonna be dealing with polar engineering in Naples, Florida for the material? Or can you utilize local?
I am able to, I would be able to use, uh, local for, uh, if you're talking for equipment to produce the foundation or if you're talking.
Say, for example, you need two by fours or a plywooder.
Yeah, you can go, we can definitely go local on that. The polar would just be for the inscribed bricks.
Alright, cuz that seems to be a little distance to wait for a two by four.
So I just got one question, um, only cuz that's like a four by eight brick, what you're saying, the twelve by twelve. That's just a brick, they, they, so they're gonna be twelve by twelve, is what we're saying or?
No, so.
I'm confused as to where the twelve by twelve coming in. I appreciate the whole project, but...
So the thing, this is your inscription brick.
Correct.
And then there, um, depending on the year, um, when we do an EP Henry after you do the fundraising request, we get what they give us. So this will be all your memorial bricks and whatever they give us, we work around.
On, on, on the perimeter and that kind of stuff. That's what I'm understanding. So the, the engraved bricks are what you have like in your hand there. They're not twelve by twelve and that's why I was confused with the twelve by twelve. That would be just a border and whatever else.
It could be a four by six, four by nine.
Yes, sir.
It's literally whatever they give us and what we work with.
Are they going to be brick to brick or are they going to be separated by a, an outline of, a form or whatever you wanna call it?
What I'd be looking to do is have just a outline of just base color, base colored bricks, probably a darker color depending on, compared to the lighter color that is there. Um, but I would like to have the engraved bricks all kind of together.
Okay.
So it's.
Thank you.
Something that won't spread out.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Um, what is the opinion of this council? Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry to cut you off. Um, cuz I skipped this.
You're okay, Kate.
I would just need from the council, I'd need obviously your approval of the project and I have a application that I'd need signed by someone up there. I'd need a, as well as a project coordinator, someone within the, within the borough council that I could, uh, relay the project through as their signature would also give you the ability to start and start the project as well with fundraising as well.
I just got elected to that one?
Yeah, you got, you got the offer.
You got the offer.
Okay, then.
We're gonna be pushing on a timeline and the project has to be finished by its birthday. So.
There you go.
That's, that's what we need, somebody we can chase down that, um, in case, you know, we need to come in at the.
I think I know someone on this council that will work well.
That's good.
Okay, let's go, guys. What's the opinion of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, who wants it?
Give it.
Give it to Kenny.
Kenny, Mr. Hall, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lipsansky, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Kate, you're in business.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck with it.
Getting bricks, getting a new fire truck. It's a great day for the fire department.
Your sign. We got more, right, Mr. Prince? Consider the request of Becky's Drive-In.
Every year, Becky's Drive-In hosts their annual benefit festival and car show to benefit dream come true of the Blue Ridge chapter. To date, they have raised over four hundred four thousand nine hundred forty dollars. They are seeking permission to use the portable van trailer for this event. They did not ask for the toilet. They will be required to pay a delivery and removal fee and provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured.
Make a motion to do that.
Motion made by Mr. Glassik?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haldeman, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? The eyes have it. Consider request to attend the civil service, civil service procedure training.
Civil Service Commission members Jeffrey Brent and Kelly Millicent are seeking permission to attend a one-day civil service procedures training workshop on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three in Quakertown, Pennsylvania. The cost is one hundred and fifty dollars for each participant.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lipsansky, second?
Second.
For Mr. Hall, question?
Question.
Okay, question?
I think my name got dropped or removed somehow because I'm interested as well to attend.
No, you went to this last year.
I know.
You wanna go again?
I would like to.
Okay, and the motion should be amended to include by. I didn't know you wanted to go again.
Thank you.
I'll amend the motion.
Is the second still there for the amendment motion?
Second amendment.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? The eyes have it? Okay. Reports from council members, starting with Mr. Hall.
Alright, thank you. Um, congratulations, Kate. I'm sure you're gonna do well. A good job and congratulations on your Eagle Scout and all the time. Um, a lot of congratulations. Congratulations, Chris. Uh, I'm on the planning commission, so, so you can come join the fun. And, uh, I guess another one to, congratulations to, uh, Chief Kdingo on the appointment of his new full-time officer. And I think that's all I have for, that's enough. End of report.
Ms. Haldeman? Uh, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, say that, uh, two weeks ago, I was able to attend the fireman's banquet and, uh, you know, I, again, I was saying to Chief Knoblock, um, I was really struck by, um, the camaraderie and brotherhood that is there. I've never had the opportunity to see that before or, and I guess it's something I said, I, you kind of take for granted that people will show up at your door if you ever need them, um, although you certainly hope that you don't, but that night, um, a couple of people were honored, a lot of people were honored and should have been, but I wanted, um, some of the council members that weren't there, our fellow councilmen here has spent thirty years volunteering for the fire police. Um, that's certainly to be commended. And another one that struck me, and I don't wanna let anybody out, was, um, our young Andrew, who, um, answered the most calls, the most fire calls in the town and it was some ridiculous number. And again, it struck me, you're eighteen years old, um, charging in where many people will not go. So Andrew, again, all of you, thank you. I, I can't say enough how, how much I was struck that night and continue to be appreciative of what you all do. Thank you, thank you very much. That's it. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Just wanna extend my congratulations also to everyone in this room who had all the requests, requests granted today. It's a good day for Northampton to have everyone progressing in their passions that were agreed to by council today. So we look forward to the end result to, uh, again, build a better Northampton and that's why we're all here. So thank you very much and congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Uh, if everyone could speak up, I'm a little hard of hearing, apparently. Just, just, uh...
And you fifth. You fifth.
Don't make fun of hard-of-hearing people.
Uh, just real quick, the fact that Councilman Hall and the fact that, and I'm sorry, I just don't know your name, but the eighteen-year-old who admirably... Andrew, the fact that you guys hated that round of applause is exactly why you deserved it. Uh, other than that, just congratulations on everything and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Alman?
Congratulations to Robert Lindsay. Please, please pass that on. I already did, but again, Mr. Crush and also Kate. So as mentioned earlier in my committee report, the fire met, the fire committee met on Monday the thirteenth. A few guest speakers were in attendance there, with one of the speakers making the remark that Northampton Borough has a top-notch chief, not, top-notch chief, AJ. And I agree with that compliment one hundred percent, but I also wanna extend it to all of you firefighters. Thank you for all you do. Really appreciate it. Being on the fire committee, I am making it my action item to find at least two acres of property inside of the borough for the fire department to train. And that will be with minimal travel as well. So if anyone here or even out there in our streaming land knows of available space, please let me know. The twenty twenty-two annual report shows five hundred sixty-two incidents for a total of one thousand eight hundred thirteen hours and nine minutes of service man-hours. And please note, those stats are incidents only, not any training, fundraising, or meetings or events. And with the permission granted, thank you, council, we are gonna be, um, having that new rescue truck purchased sometime in twenty twenty-six. And the newly implemented fire tax will generate some of that much-needed funds to take care of that. And for those who you, who have been asking, the nineteen sixty-two Mack White Horse will remain at the fire station. It is not one of the older trucks that will be taken out. Also at that meeting on Monday, one of the firefighters had mentioned a new program he would like to implement, which would be the youth firefighter, firefighters camp. Just some, um, details on that. It would be for one week, Monday through Friday, with a Saturday Family Day two-hour presentation. The cost would be somewhere between twenty-five and thirty dollars per person. Fifteen candidates would be the, um, the minimum and the years would be twelve to fifteen years to attend. The fee would include lunch, a tee-shirt, and a cap and they would visit the nine-one-one center, airport fire department, and other places.
Twelve to fifteen years of age, correct?
Yes.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. France, on that?
No, I think, uh, you know, Councilman Ahm had pretty much hit it on the head. So yeah, again, this is, uh, something that's been in my vision for a long time, being in the fire service for about thirty-eight years. So it's, uh, we, we need to look into the future for our department. We need to continue to bring in younger individuals so they draw an interest to the fire service. As you know, our numbers are to one of the, we're lucky in the borough of Northampton, as we all know, the amount of people that we have in our department. But statewide, when you go from two hundred seventy-five thousand volunteer firefighters in nineteen seventy-nine down to seventy-two thousand, uh, for today's number, you, you, you gotta start thinking of what you're gonna do to survive. So again, we're lucky, we're fortunate, we got a good, uh, we got a good membership. But, uh, my vision is to bring on new members, younger members, and see if the, by having this youth camp, if we have any interest in bringing township residents on to our department. Uh, we'll, we'll open it up to township residents first, our borough residents first. Um, if we don't, uh, fill up our, our maximum number is gonna be fifteen for our first year. If we don't have enough, we'll go off to outside, uh, the borough. Uh, but we're, we're hoping we get a good turnout. Uh, Leroy has our application process, our packet. He's gonna share it with legal just to make sure that we're covered with liability. Uh, that once we get that information back, then we'll, we'll start the process of getting it advertised and getting it out to the, the borough residents. So looking forward to it. Uh, we have a lot of good ideas, uh, in touch, and our, our guys now are ready to, to come up with some ideas for training, but I think we have a pretty good, uh, uh, pretty good idea what we wanna do for that, that week, so.
And you're looking to have this in July, correct?
Yeah, July tenth, that week of July tenth. With that following Saturday, we'll have a closing ceremony, uh, be a family day, watch the parents that come in, uh, or the siblings, and give out presentations and have coffee and donuts that Saturday morning, kind of a tour of the station for the family as well. And then the, the cadets can actually, uh, show the family members what they, what they learned through that week, so.
Very good, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. France.
Thank you.
Ms. Ahm?
So moving on to the health report. Grease-related issues were found at two of the eateries. A consultation with the person proposing to operate a mini mart in the eighteen-hundred block of Main Street was made, and I'm gonna ask our, uh, borough manager, do you know any more details on that? That you can share with us? The mini mart?
For me? No, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, cause there wasn't anything included in their report. And then another question I have for you also, um, is the, they are monitoring product recall information from the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture and federal agencies. Do we know what that product might be and could it be in any of our households? Should we be concerned?
I, I can't answer that.
Okay. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Seok?
Okay, I would like to congratulate Mr. Crush and the officer for his appointment and also, um, our fine scout, uh, for his efforts. I really appreciate that, and I would like to be the first one to donate fifty dollars in behalf of myself and my husband for Brick Four, Alan Wonder. He was one of our very long time ago chiefs. And, uh, I'm very proud of what you're doing. I have, uh, um, the police department had three hundred ninety-five dispatches, a hundred forty incident reports, eight accident investigations. There was a total of fifty-seven parking tickets, uh, seventeen citations, seven, one, uh, non-traffic citation, um, sixty-five parking tickets. There was a manufacturing, delivering possession of controlled substance arrest and one receiving stolen property arrest. And that's about the end of my report.
End of your report, thank you. Mr. Glassick?
Good, thank you. Um, congrats to all, everybody again. Uh, Chris, for stepping up, you know, this is the kinda thing that we're looking for every, every meeting. We're asking people in our residence to step up and take a, a stand and help our burrows be better. We see that by Kayden with congratulations on what you're doing here for your Eagle Scout, but helping, again, make Northampton, again, what it really should be outstanding representation, you know, for our residents, our firefighters and everything. And then congrats to Chief Kadingo for Robert Lindsay, the new officer with more needed. Um, couple things, I guess Leroy, this would be a question for you. The brick that we're using for this, do we not use bricks for the memorial of the veterans and things like that? Would there be a, a, you know, a way where we can maybe look at talking to them and seeing if we could help with that?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but I believe the bricks on the memorial lot, uh, come from the brickyard.
Oh. Just to, just to throw it out there, but you already have a lot of things in your, in your plans to work with, but I just thought it would be something to look down the future. You know, so, cause we, we have that great memorial there and I know we dedicated bricks and stuff in there, so just maybe another avenue for you to continue to look at. Price maybe, you know, learn how to beat them up on a price maybe for the brick, put more to the bottom line. Um, but thank you for what you're doing with that. Leroy, another question for you. Out here on the trail, Northampton Bass Trail, it seems like the American Container is starting to store dumpsters. And we were looking to see if we could find out why, if they're not, shouldn't be fenced in or something like that?
No, I, I was, I was out there to look at it and that, uh, those are all stored on or was property. If anyone goes on that property, they're trespassing. It's private property. I know it's right adjacent to the trail, but that.
Well, kids go on the trail and kids are inquisitive and they wanna climb up on things and if they fall on one of those dumpsters, I, I'm just saying, it just looks like we could maybe make a call to the.
I can, I can suggest.
I'm not trying to say he can't use his land for what he wants, but it should be safety. You know, if he wants to store it there and, and maybe get rent from somebody, but you're walking along the trail and all those dumpsters are just sitting there.
Yeah, but I did go and look at it. I, I can mention it to him.
He's great to work with. I mean, he knows, he's done the law for us and I don't wanna, you know, but again, safety would be a temporary fence around there, so at least it avoids from kids getting inquisitive to climb over there. I mean, I walked by it on, on the trail just doing the, the walk-around and I couldn't believe how many dumpsters are sitting out there.
I can make that suggestion.
Yeah, that's all you can do. Thank you. Um, I wanna thank our assistant to the borough manager, Brian Welsko, for the, uh, streaming and we've had a great, um, vocal and hearing now, so nobody can call me tonight and say, I didn't hear anything. It's still not working, so thank you for all of your efforts with that. Uh, also for, uh, we contacted the director of the farmer's market. We were trying to set up a meeting for the farmer's market to make this year's farmer's market at Northampton bigger, better, and stronger with helping her, cause she has done a great job and the farmer's market has done a great job with everything. We just wanna make that grow and help so that we can avoid maybe the, some of the vandalism that happens down there from the kids and things and we can show that this is a town that takes pride in it and we wanna grow our farmer's market. So thank you for doing that, too. Um, I don't know, this parking issue is still bothering me and I'm gonna try to read into it, but I sure hope the solicitor knows that I wasn't trying to, uh, overstep my bounds, but I needed to know what the clarity was.
Of course.
Because it wasn't seem like it was gonna go anywhere, but the fact was, we stick by our ground, we gave them twenty-one spaces. If they wanna take that investment and move forward with it, we don't have control of the, uh, railroad company, nor we will, ever will. But I think it was the right thing to go forward and I think the council did the right thing. Um, fire department, again, I think Barry, what you're doing is outstanding to grow this department for young kids. But I had a personal issue at, uh, a family member's house, uh, this past week. And when I got called by the neighbor, thank goodness, um, and got over there and went in the house and there was three or four firefighters in there. What you can teach, and this goes to the kudos to the chief and I hope he passed on my sincere appreciation. You have the professionalism, you have the caring, you have the right attitude, you're dealing with an elderly person, but it was just amazing to see what was inside there. And there were younger kids and not, no offense to the people that were out in the street or even inside there, they're always outstanding. But I was just taken back on the professionalism from these younger firefighters that we have on our firefighter, our, our force. So thank you for that. On a personal note, thank you because it was just, you know, showed how strong our firefighting department is. So thank you again for that. Um, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick. Okay.
I, I would like to say with pride, most everyone on council mentioned everything that I have in my book. I don't know how yous do it, but you took all my talking points away, but I can make up stuff. Uh, the fire department, again, as I've always said, and anybody who knows me, anybody who has heard me, I think we have the damnedest good police, fire department, police department, uh, first aid, emergency services, anywhere. I would put our group of emergency services people up against anyone, anywhere, any size city, town, state, and I think we could stay toe-to-toe with them and they may even have to look at our heels. Because I believe we had a, have a hell of a group, and that only comes because the people of this borough. It's unfortunate that you, you can't prove it, but I believe when you cut yourself, you bleed black and orange. It's a, it, it, it's something to be proud of. Uh, again, as I stated, I was at the banquet the other night and, uh, things took place that were very, very good, very, very good. It's a situation where I think if you believe in the people and groups that you have and let them run, just like a good dog, they will respond to commands from the, the trainer. And they will do what they need to do, and there will not be a problem. Should there be something that would go awry, it's taken care of quickly, swiftly, quietly, and to the point. So the entire emergency services of this borough, congratulations. You people do a hell of a job. And I do not shirk my duty from mentioning that every now and then. I feel like a cheerleader because there's something to really cheer about. And as, uh, Mr. Glassick has pointed out, of which I have many, 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 many years of experience in the situations he explained. I've been at many, many scenes with the fire departments, with the ambulance corps, with the, uh, traffic directors. It's, it's amazing what you see if you want to see it. And as he said, everyone is professional. There's no quibbeting, there's no backstabbing, there's nothing. Now, if there's something that needs to be discussed, I would imagine, when you get back to the firehouse or to the police station and the station and that, it gets discussed and it gets ironed out because it doesn't happen again. I've seen that countless times and that's why I can say I am damn proud to be in a borough where somebody like you would come to save someone like me. Thank you for your service, thank you for your time, thank you for your skills. Stay on it, move forward, and don't take criticism to heart. And the gentleman who is a scout, I just give you a little bit of information. When you deal with people, people do not understand the difference between a smile and a grimace. They look the same, but they feel different and only you know. So don't be afraid to help yourself. Just smile. Everybody will say, why are you always so happy? Can't tell the difference between a smile and a grimace. I yield back the balance of my time to the chair.
Okay, moving on to announcements.
Uh, I only have really one. Uh, you know, I could echo what everyone said, uh, congratulations here, congratulations there. I, I, I don't take it for granted, I consider myself blessed to live in Northampton. Uh, the people, even though I don't always agree with them, I, I understand that what they take to heart is important to them and it should be important to me. I know what's important to the fire department. I know what's important to the police department. I know what's important to Public Works, Administration, and let me stop there. Uh, Monday I went into the zoning office and, uh, I had to talk with Julianne about something and she said, uh, maybe you better sit down. And I, I thought, oh, what's this? Mondays are not good days for me. So I sat down and she said, um, I'm going to be a grandmother. And I thought, wow, that's great. I said, it's gonna be the greatest thing that ever happened to you. You know, having children's wonderful, but grandchildren, it's a whole different story. Cause they could go home. And, uh, she said, uh, so, uh, I'm going to be retiring on June the fifteenth. And it took me a little while to comprehend that because I wasn't prepared for it. Just a few weeks ago, we said goodbye to Barbara. I worked in the office with her for thirty years. Uh, Julianne was in the office as a part-timer when I moved into the office. It's going to be difficult not having her around and not having two foundation people is gonna be even more difficult. Uh, Bernadette is working out well, thanks to Megan. She's taken her under her wing. Uh, she tells her when to laugh at my jokes, I wonder if I'm not trolling. Uh, so, uh, in the next couple of months, things are going to get a little different. And, uh, all we can do is try the best we can. We're going to have to, uh, prepare to replace Julianne. What I would like to do is at least for the time being advertise that position within the borough employees. And see if there's anyone who has any background or anyone that has any interest. Uh, if, if we don't receive any, then we'll have to go outside. Um, other than that, Princeton beat Arizona, nobody can believe that. Virginia lost already, so why not, let's go home and watch some basketball.
So do you want that permission tonight? How do you wanna do that?
Um, if it's internal, I don't believe you would require.
If it's internal?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, prepare that the position will be available and, uh, post it in all departments.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Would we be able to pay the outstanding bills that have been cleared and sent for payment?
Motion made by Tommy, second, by.
Second.
Second. Bye, Mrs. Ahm. Uh, question?
Questions?
Okay.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
Thank you.
Question?
Um, Axon, Axonim, uh, gear, assembly, thirty-six hundred?
Oh, that's at the sewer plant.
Oh, is that that part again broke?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the same one that's on the clock?
So it's eleven thousand and thirty-six?
No, the clock is working, clock is working.
So just let me explain, that's thirty-six hundred, that's eleven thousand for two parts.
Oh, no, the eleven thousand, those are the tasers for the police department.
Oh, okay.
And that actually began as a fifty, uh, fifty-odd thousand dollar, uh, fifty-five thousand dollar maintenance contract that we have broken in five years.
Okay.
Originally, they wanted it all upfront.
So the thirty-six hundred is the part for the.
Sewer plant.
Sewer plant. And again, I'll, I'll comment that the sludge is twelve thousand this month. And the water testing for the, the wastewater testing is another seven thousand. This is why we have such a need for our sewer plant to be renovated and the five thirty-seven plan and everything that goes along with it. So when you hear us talking about it and you see things coming down through the notes, you see these kinda dollars every month of sludge, water waste, testing for the water waste and parts breaking on a day, day-in and day-out basis. And what those guys do over at the sewer plant are amazing to keep it running so that when you do flush your toilet, you realize how easy it is. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Uh, that, the wastewater testing, that normally won't appear that.
Much, at all time.
Much, but, uh, there was a problem with them. Much, but uh, there was a problem with them delivering the billing to us and it all showed up at one time.
Okay. I haven't seen it on there, that's why I wasn't sure that seven thousand.
That was an irregularity, thank you USPS.
That's all, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes? The ayes have it?
Motion to adjourn.
And by Mr. Kenny Hall.
Second.
On Mr. Glassick. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let's go home ladies.